Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Greetings, everybody, and welcome. Without objection, I'll accept the agenda for tonight.
Um, have you ever--
Well, I'm-- I heard, yes. You'd like to change the order for tonight. So, without objection, I would like to also move item 19-5 up to the top of the agenda in front of 19-2 today because Jeremy Ginsburg's here and there's no need to keep him through the whole meeting. Yeah, yes, Lois? Oh, okay. And without objection, I'd also like to add to the agenda a briefing from Jeremy on what's going on with these big projects here in town. He was nice enough to be here and he's agreed to do it. So if that's all right with everybody, we'll go ahead and do that. So, that takes care of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 28?
No.
A second, please? Additions, anything like that? Okay. So, all those in favor of accepting the-- and approving the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You can give them to Donna later if you weren't here. Thank you. Announcements? Just a few things. I was approached earlier this year about having some sort of education for the eventuality or situation where a shooter came into a group. And the Darien police are quite willing to give a briefing to members of the RTM about it. They would do it at the police station. And if there are those of you who would like to get such a briefing, if you would give your name to Donna, we'll set it up so that you can do that. Obviously, having it in open session is not exactly possible, all right? Just another brief thing, the bag ordinance continues. We have three committees working on it. It's getting closer and closer to fruition. And I just wanted to let you know that everybody's working. Monica McNally doesn't do anything else, I guess, with her life except the bag ordinance, followed closely by Frank Kemp and TG SNA. And I think Town Council's--
What do you think?
I'm guessing Town Council's tired of hearing about-- No, I'm just-- so good. We continue apace. One other memo is that Joe Machelli, a member of our body, had open-heart surgery and is recovering well, I understand. So, our heart goes out to him. So, item 19-5, we'll take that first. Consideration in action on the planning and zoning director's request for increases in land use for PZ and H. Amy Barsanti, Amy, you're going to be doing that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Amy Barsanti, District 1, Vice Chair of the RTM Planning, Zoning, and Housing Committee. I move RTM Resolution 19-5, Resolution of the Representative Town Meeting of Darien, authorizing increases in land use application and permit zoning-- zoning permit fees. Do I have a second?
If there are no objections, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution.
Okay. PZ and H met on January 28 and again tonight to review this resolution. Jeremy Ginsburg was kind enough to be present for this evening to provide an overview and answer any questions that the group had. This increase was requested by the Darien Land Use Boards for the purpose of effectively covering expenses incurred by these departments. Those expenses not only entail the allocation of staff members' time in reviewing applications and permits, but also all of the statutory requirements that are involved with posting notices, postage, advertisements in local papers, hiring scenographers, et cetera. The last increase was done in 2016. The effective date for this proposed increase will be March 31, 2019. Our committee voted on the resolution this evening with 10 members present, representing a quorum. We approved the resolution unanimously, and we recommend the same to the full RTM.
I'm Jack Davis, District 3, Chairman of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. We met also tonight jointly with PZ and H, with nine of 15 members present constituting a quorum. As previously mentioned, the fees were last changed three years ago. The fees are effective at the end of March, which gives time for consumers to actually move in prior to the fee change. I do want to mention that unlike other town fees, P&amp;Z fees need RTM approval because they can only be changed by ordinance, and that's based upon the state statute that addresses these. So, all the ordinance-- all the fees are in ordinance, and so they must be approved by this body. The committee reviewed how they're calculated, and I think that's very important because I've always joked that Jeremy does sort of a Mackenzie-type of calculation, which is standard costs for how long it takes to process an application, what are the outside costs, whether or not something is a state required fee that has to be embedded. And Amy mentioned some of the other fees associated with that. The goal is not to make this a profit center. The goal is to cover costs. And it's also not to be burdensome on the smaller developments and applications that are going on. We want people to, in fact, go and apply for an application as opposed to saying, "Oh, my goodness, what do I have here?" Just so that people are aware, in the current budget that is being discussed actually right now by the Board of Selectmen, there's $122,000 approximately for these types of fees in the current budget. If we approve it tonight, that will be adjusted by the range of $25,000 to $30,000, based upon a conversation that will occur subsequently. This is in line with what the fees we have had for the last three fiscal years. '16, we had about $107,000. '17, we had about $123,000. And in '18, fiscal year '18, we had about $122,000. So, that sort of explains some of the reasons of how they do it. The one way that he is not a Mackenzie fee is Mackenzie does believe you charge what the market will bear. That isn't done here. So, the F&amp;B Committee voted nine in favor, none against, and none abstaining, and recommends the same to the full RTM. Thank you.
Town officials? Questions, members of the RTM? Members of the public? Ready to vote? All those in favor, please rise. Please rise. And abstentions? Thank you. Now, I'll introduce Jeremy Ginsburg to talk to us about some of these big projects that are going on in town and where they are now.
Thank you all for your support. Jeremy Ginsburg, Planning and Zoning Director. Seth asked me to take a few minutes just to talk about the three major mixed-use developments you've heard about over the past year, where they are in the development stage, and when they expect to get underway. So first, we'll start with the Corbin Project. That's been put forth by Baywater Properties, David Genovese. That project was recently approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in November 2018. This is for the property extending from Exit 11, the Bank of America Building, right at the bottom of the exit, all the way along Boston Post Road to the Corbin Building, both sides of Corbin Drive, including the gas station, the post office, and that whole block, both just north of Exit 11 and the other side of Corbin Drive. So there's a number of buildings there now. It's the parking that backs into Boston Post Road. The next step for this project is to get State of Connecticut DOT approval. Because the project's right on Boston Post Road, because there's over 200 parking spaces involved, the DOT has to take a look at it. I was at the first meeting where Baywater Properties presented their project to State DOT. They are currently in the process of having their civil and traffic engineers prepare a written response, and that is moving along. We expect DOT to approve-- give their final approval over the next few months. Once they do that, they can apply for the building demolition permits first, certainly, and building permits. It's likely due to the size of that project, which is really, I think it's nine different multi-story buildings, that it's going to be built in phases over a number of years, probably starting no earlier than later in 2019. All of the projects I'm talking about tonight, all the studies, reports, plans, documents, and the Planning and Zoning Commission approvals have been posted to the town website, darienct.gov backslash PZC, if you wanted to take a look closer. Of course, all the plans are also available in our office. The second project I wanted to talk briefly about is Federal Realty Project. It's called the Commons at Nuroton Heights. This really envisions the buildings, if you think of Nuroton Heights across from the train station, Equinox, Walgreens, Stop &amp; Shop, those are the big buildings in that project. They received Planning and Zoning Commission approval in September of 2017. They then got their State DOT approval, and they expect to start their project, the demolition, in the winter of 2019. So, eight months from now, nine months from now, and the completion of the project's anticipated summer or fall of 2021 at the earliest. Again, multi-years of construction. They're working with their-- both their existing tenants and their proposed tenants to try to come up with buildings that work for them, the construction documents that their architects are working on. They're working with potential tenants on getting those construction documents to match the tenants' needs. The third project is the redevelopment of the Nuroton Heights Shopping Center. Some folks might think of this as the Palmer redevelopment, but the Palmer Market is really not part of this. There will be no change to the supermarket other than a little more drainage put into their parking lot, which is on Edgerton Street. The redevelopment really is in the area from the liquor store, Donut Inn, the Nuroton Heights Post Office, and the other building, which is Fabricare Barrett Bookstore, extending all the way back to Heights Pizza, and Johnny's South Side, which is the third building. So all those buildings will eventually come down as part of the redevelopment, which will have ironically about the same amount of commercial space. The only difference is there'll be three-- two different three-story buildings, which will contain 59 apartments or condominiums, one and two bedrooms. So, again, in this case, the Nuroton Heights Shopping Center has received their DOT approval and are working on final construction plans to redevelop the site. All their local approvals have been obtained. Demolition is likely to start in the summer or fall of 2019, about six months from now. Once the demolition occurs, you'll see the new buildings going up. They're still working out whether they're going to build in phases or all at once. Things have to be taken into account for that, the tenants' needs, and whether you can safely build these buildings while-- and have sufficient parking while the tenants are still there. So, you're not likely to see a lot of movement on these fronts between now and, say, July or August, but starting in the fall, in the winter, you're going to see a lot of buildings coming down, and in the interim, some commercial tenants starting to move. You may have noticed that the Nuroton Heights Post Office will soon be moving to be under Palmer's Market in anticipation of this redevelopment. Again, you can go on the town website, take a look at the plans, stop by the Planning and Zoning Office, and I'm welcome-- welcome to come back in a few months to fill you all in again as things move along. Thank you.
That was great. So, we'll move to item 19-2. First of all, the results on 19-5, Planning and Zoning Land Use Fees. Seventy-three in favor, no no's, two abstentions. 19-2 is consideration in action on the newly negotiated contract between the Town of Darien and the Town Hall Employees for Finance and Budget. Jack Davis.
I am Jack Davis, District 3, Chairman of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. I move RTM Resolution 19-2, Consideration in Action on the Newly Negotiated Contract Between the Town of Darien and the Town Hall Employees Union, Effective July 1, 2018, and Expiring June 30, 2021. Do I have a second? If there is no objection, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. The RTM Finance and Budget Committee met on February 7 with 11 of 15 members present constituting a quorum. This is almost a boilerplate that I have to mention every time we do a union contract. We are not voting to approve. We are voting not to reject. And the reason is that if we reject, it goes into arbitration. Arbitration is not that they have-- in an arbitration, the town presents their side, the union presents their side, and the arbitrator picks either the town's side or the union's side. There's no middle ground. And typically, towns do not do well in arbitration. Towns like Darien do even less well in arbitration. So, we're not voting to approve, we're voting not to reject. As you may have noticed, this contract starts back a while. During the negotiations, there were a few sticking points, and the town negotiators, which included Kate and other members of the administration, decided to walk away. They came back and proposed to the union that they bring in a moderator to resolve those differences. And the contract we have here is the result of that moderator's working with both the union and the town. Now, I know that Kate sent out, as part of our package, the definition of the contract, and I'm just going to read certain parts of it, so I apologize for those who have already read. This covers 32 employees, 11 in the police, including civilian dispatch, nine in planning and zoning and building. It also includes town clerk's office, tax collector, assessors' office, health, fire, marshal, public works, and a couple of other individuals hidden here and there. Of the 32 employees, 50% are already at the highest step that we have. Wages are increasing by 2% for effective at our fiscal year, July 1, 2018, 2.25% for '19 and '20. Medical plans is currently the same one with the MACB Pharmacy, with increasing the contribution by the union workers by-- from 6% to 7.5% in 2019 fiscal year '19, 9% in the following year, and then effective at May-- I'm sorry, June 30, 2021, or-- and the following contract, it goes up to 9.5%. Estimated cost savings are $15,000 for the first year, 12% for the next, and 4% in the last year. Beginning in fiscal year '20, the town will offer a buy-up option for dental. In other words, the town will pay its standard dental, but if you want orthodontist or other work, the employees have the right to pay the differential between the premium of what the town would pay and what the additional cost is. There's also a vision plan that is new, where the town will pay 50% of the premiums, which is much better if you heard what the other numbers were. And the estimated cost is about $3,000 if every employee opted in for that participation. Important part when I'm talking about the police, because even the Board of Selectmen were discussing earlier tonight, civilian dispatch. And in the budget that we'll be looking at sometime in May, there's the move to add three additional civilian dispatch. Telecommunication employees will have the option, that's civilian dispatch, to selecting the town's current retirement plan or defined contribution plan. The reason why they may choose a defined contribution plan is that it allows us to hire a retired police officer who could no longer participate in the current retirement plan because they're retired, and then therefore they would have the defined contribution, and therefore that would help us in having experienced people with dispatch who are also familiar with our police department. There's some language changes, including working 70 hours for a two-week period. Eight positions had-- which had specific work hours have been changed. Probation period has been increased from three to six months. There's changes in payroll cycle, which really is a little bit complicated, so if you really, really want to know about it, I'm going to defer that to Kate. New employees are limited to a five-week vacation carryover. Sick leave verification can happen after three days. Family sick leave was codified. Personal leave cannot be taken contiguous with vacation time. Some other things is 75% of the educational reimbursement for books and tuition. We increased the cost of uniforms from 500 to 600, and now include shoes, which is important for some of these employees. And there's changes to the schedule to dispatch to what they refer to as the Yates Plan. And again, I will refer explanation of the Yates Plan to Kate because she can do it much better than I can. The RTM F&amp;B Committee voted unanimously in favor of this contract and recommends the same to the full RTM. Thank you.
For PZ and H, Amy Barsanti.
I'm sorry, I was prepared to review this--
Okay.
--before-- yeah, I'm sorry. That was not on our agenda from Joanne. She was out of town. It was not on the agenda for our--
Okay. No report from PZ and H. Public Health and Safety, Mac Patrick.
Hi, I'm Mac Patrick. I chair Public Health and Safety. We met tonight with 14 of 16 members present, and I really have like three or four paragraphs to go over, but Jack covered everything. So we really had-- we had the same discussions, and we ended up voting to approve the resolution unanimously, 14 to 0. And we did-- we did vote to approve it, not approve-- but that's what we did. We voted to approve it. Thank you.
Kate, do you want to say anything? You don't have to, but if you'd like to. Members of the RTM? Okay. Members of the public? Seeing none? Ready to vote? All those in favor, please rise. And abstentions? Next item would be 19-3, Consideration in Action on Authorization of a Tax Differral Program for Federal Employees Affected by the Recent Government Shutdown. And on behalf of Finance and Budget, Jack Davis.
I'm Jack Davis, District 3, Chairman of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. I move RTM Resolution 19-3, Consideration in Action on Authorization of a Tax Differral Program for Federal Employees Affected by the Recent Government Shutdown. Do I have a second? If there's no objections, I propose to waive the reading of the resolution. The RTM Finance and Budget Committee met on February 7 with 11 of 15 members present constituting a quorum. This program allows for the deferral of interest on late-January real estate tax payments until such time that the federal government shutdown has ended and employees have been paid the payroll due. Any federal employee that requested to participate in this program would then have 60 days from the time the past due payroll was made to pay the outstanding real estate taxes. After the 60-day period, the taxes were not paid in full, interest would be applied. I can report that the shutdown has ended. Employees have been paid, so the 60-day clock is ticking. However, there can be no deferral for any of the people who have applied for this until the RTM passes this resolution. As such, our approval is necessary to have these provisions put into place to be effective January 31. The RTM Finance and Budget Committee voted 10 in favor, none opposed, and one abstention, and recommended passage to the full RTM. The committee has a federal employee within its membership who abstained, as this covers all federal employees, whether or not participating in the program or not. Our member is not participating, so you don't have to look out for them, but it was still appropriate to abstain and let you know that he is not participating.
Any other committees? Town officials? Town officials? Members of the RTM? Members of the public? Ready to vote? Results on 19-2 Town Hall Contract were 73 in favor, no noes, and two abstentions. Opposed? And abstentions? Next item is 19-4, Consideration and Action on a Gift of $27,753.81 from the Fireworks Committee to the Town of Darien for future fireworks shows. On behalf of Park &amp; Rec, Adele Coniff.
Adele Coniff, District 3, Chairman of the RTM Parks and Recreation Committee. I move 19-4, Resolution of the Representative Town Meeting of the Town of Darien, authorizing the acceptance of a gift of $27,753.81 from the Chamber of Commerce and the appropriation of said money for the annual Independence Day fireworks. May I have a second?
Second.
With no objection, I'd like to waive the reading of the resolution. The annual Town of Darien Independence Day celebration has been a collaborative effort of the town and the community. The event requires setup and cleanup, and includes food trucks, entertainment, and of course, the fireworks. Citizens have volunteered their organizational and fundraising skills to make this event a success. Thank you to the Fireworks Committee, and particularly Susan Marks and David Genovese, for doing the heavy lifting for all of us. Last year, this selectman asked the Parks and Recreation Department to take over hosting the event. Susan helped make this transition as seamless as possible. To make this event a success, we will continue to need the help of sponsors, our police, Nuroton Heights Firemen, Post 53, and the Town of Darien. There is $27,753.81 left to use toward future Independence Day celebrations. In recent years, the Darien Chamber of Commerce very kindly served as a bank for the Independence Day collected funds. This explains why this gift comes from the Chamber. Any gift to the Town of Darien in excess of $10,000 may be accepted with action by the RTM. Going forward, the funds raised will be managed by the Parks and Recreation Department in a special revenue fund. The RTM Parks and Recreation Committee met on February 13, 2019, with 10 of 15 members present, constituting a quorum. The committee voted unanimously to accept $27,753.81 from the Chamber of Commerce for the annual Independence Day fireworks, and hope that you will do the same.
On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, Jack Davis.
I'm Jack Davis, District 3, Chairman of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. The F&amp;B Committee met on February 7 with 11 of 15 members present, constituting a quorum. My report will deal solely with the accounting of it, since Adele and Park &amp; Rec did a wonderful job explaining what occurs. At the time of our meeting, there was a lot of discussion on how this will be accounted for. In the past, these things were counted in a contra account, that the revenue would go in and the expenses would go into the same account. But we also discussed other options, which were being discussed by Jen and Kate at the time, which was including a special revenue fund solely for this event, and maybe expanded subsequently to other Park &amp; Rec events. That's what was subsequently decided. So going into this basically reserve fund will be this gift, future gifts associated with future fireworks shows, because we still need to raise money to have this occur, the parking fees collected that occur for the spots at the high school, vendor and other fees, and other amounts that I haven't mentioned but will occur over the time. Out of this fund will be the expenses related to the fireworks shows, including but not limited to the cost of the fireworks, insurances, cleanup, and other costs. The cost of police during the fireworks will remain to be borne by the town and will not be coming out of that fund. Based upon the discussions that we had about the various accounting, the committee thought that this was the best way to handle it on a separate fund, and we voted unanimously to accepting the gift and recommend the same to the full RTM. And the RTM Finance and Budget Committee would like to thank those, David and Susan, who have donated so much of their time to making this special event for the town occur.
Thank you, Jack. Any other committees? Town officials? Members of the RTM? Members of the public? Ready to vote? Those in favor, please rise. The results of 19-3, Tax Deferral for Federal Employees, 73 in favor, no noes, and two I remind everybody we have to stay here until we count the votes for this last item. And abstentions? Okay. The results of 19-4, the fireworks gift, 74 in favor, no opposed, one abstention. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, please.
Second.
All those in favor, please rise.